Okay, thank you. Okay, we're just getting started with our City of Hollister regular city council meeting, December one. Wow, we're in December already 2025, six o'clock. And I am going to ask our city clerk for roll call.
Vice Mayor Pacheco.
Present.
Councilmember Rosendrez.
Present.
Councilmember Morales. Councilmember Deanda here and Mayor Stevens.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, so we are going to go into closed session first and then we'll pick up with the rest of the agenda after that. So I'll ask the city attorney to read the closed session items.
Sure, the city council will meet in closed session on two items. The first conference with legal counsel existing litigation pursuant to government code section five four nine five six nine point nine D one. Precision Grade Inc. versus the City of Hollister. And the second item is conference with real property negotiators pursuant to government code section five four nine five six point eight. The property in question is one ninety Maple Avenue Hollister. The agency negotiator is Jim Pia, interim city manager. And under negotiation is the purchase terms and conditions.
Okay, thank you for that. Do we have any public comment on these items, either one?
There are no public comment for either closed session item.
Okay, thank you. So we're going to convene to closed session. So we're gonna ask others to leave and then we will.
We're ready whenever you are.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we're just getting started with our City of Hollister regular city council meeting December one. Wow, we're in December already 2025, six o'clock. And I am going to ask our city clerk for roll call.
Vice Mayor Pacheco.
Present.
Councilmember Rosendrez.
Present.
Councilmember Morales. Councilmember Deanda here and Mayor Stevens.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, so we are going to go into closed session first and then we'll pick up with the rest of the agenda after that. So I'll ask the city attorney to read the closed session items.
Sure, the city council will meet in closed session on two items. The first conference with legal counsel existing litigation pursuant to government code section five four nine five six nine point nine D one. Precision Grade Inc. versus the City of Hollister. And the second item is conference with real property negotiators pursuant to government code section five four nine five six point eight. The property in question is one ninety Maple Avenue Hollister. The agency negotiator is Jim Pia, interim city manager. And under negotiation is the purchase terms and conditions.
Okay, thank you for that. Do we have any public comment on these items, either one?
There are no public comment for either closed session item.
Okay, thank you. So we're going to convene to closed session. So we're gonna ask others to leave and then we will.
Okay, now we're good.
Okay, thank you. So we are reconvening with the rest of our public agenda for Hollister, City of Hollister City Council meeting. We just finished our closed session items. I'm gonna ask our city attorney if there's anything to report out.
Yes, on the first item, the Lad Lane or Precision Grade Inc. versus the City of Hollister, the city council voted to enter into a settlement agreement with both the main contractor Precision Grade and the subcontractor Sierra Markings, where the city will pay Sierra Markings seventy two thousand five hundred dollars and maintain the remainder of the withheld liquidated damages. The city council voted unanimously to approve that settlement agreement.
Okay, thanks for that report out. And then we're gonna have council member Deanda lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Where do you begin?
By the fifth line of the United States Constitution, and two, three, five, four, seven, eight, one, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty.
Okay, thank you for that. Okay, so let's get started with our agenda. So we're gonna move to public input. These are the item, these are for items that do not appear on our agenda. So let me just read a little blurb on this. So this is an opportunity for speakers to come to the podium and speak on any item that is not on the agenda. Speaker cards are available in the back of the lobby, so please complete them and bring them up to our city clerk. If you're on Zoom, you just raise your hand on Zoom. And if you're on Zoom with your cellphone, use the asterisk and the nine. And you will have up to three minutes per public comment with a maximum of thirty minutes per subject. Please note that the state law prohibits the city council from discussing any or discussing or taking action on any item that does not appear on the agenda. City clerk, do we have any public comments on this item?
Yes, Mayor Stevens, we have one speaker, Rigo.
Thank you.
Hello, everybody. City of Hollister council members, nice to see you again. I saw everybody out on Saturday. It was a wonderful parade. Food Not Bombs was there. Food Not Bombs Hollister was there volunteering. We picked up a bunch of trash. We let a bunch of cars around. We, you know, did all the community work, you know. And today, we were out doing our food share, our weekly food share, Mondays from four in the afternoon to five thirty, or until we run out of food, which we always do, on Fourth and Monterey, on the corner of Fourth and Monterey. And today, we were setting up, having a great time, feeding the community. And we had a health inspector, I believe, from the city of San Benito drive their car onto the corner and almost, it almost hit me. I thought I was gonna get hit by a car today. And they came out very aggressively telling us to put our stuff away. And as soon as I started telling other people to record, it, he, you know, the tone changed, obviously. But the thing is, is we are now legally allowed to do the things that we're doing with food shares, according to SB six thirty-four. I hope you guys have all read into it, actually, because it's very important to let officers know, let everybody in the community know, everybody who would enforce laws to know that SB six thirty-four exists, that it prohibits, I'm not gonna try to spell it out to you by, by memory, but please look into it. It's very important. SB six thirty-four protects people who are trying to give anything from life-saving care to medical assistance, to personal hygiene, to food, water, water provisions, food provisions, food socks, anything except for plywood. So we're allowed, this is, the California government has recognized that a hundred and eighty-seven thousand Californians sleep out on the street every night. Three hundred thousand over the year homeless. And this is a, we're recognizing that this is a housing crisis, that the housing crisis has led to the houselessness crisis, of course. And the food insecurity crisis is part of that. The food insecurity crises out the wazoo, right? So the community is trying, us, Food Not Bombs Hollister, and other members of the community are trying our hardest to address these issues. And we'd like for you guys to really read into SB six thirty-four and other relevant laws, so that you guys can inform the police department, the sheriff's department, and any other relevant agencies. Thank you.
Thank you, Rigo. And although I'm not gonna make a comment, I just wanna double check. Health inspectors are county, is that right? And I just wanna say that just so that you're sure, we can't, we're not gonna, yeah, so I just wanna, just as, just as an FYI. Okay, no, no, you had your, I, but no, you can speak to any one of us after the meeting or contact us. I think you have all of our contact information. But thank you so much. I just wanted to make sure that you had the right information. Thank you. Thank you. All right, good. Thank you. Okay, so we're getting, and thank you for, for also the, what you're doing with the community. I appreciate it. And then, so we're moving on to the consent agenda items. So do we have any members of the councils that have any brief questions or comments on any items on the consent agenda? Okay, not seeing anything. So I'm gonna ask our city clerk if we have any comments from any of the items on the consent agenda.
We do not have speakers for any of the consent agenda items.
Okay, so I'm gonna ask for a motion on the consent calendar.
Move to adopt.
Can I get a second?
A second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so consent agenda items, pass, five zero. So with that, we're gonna move on to our next item. So we're gonna do, we're moving on to eight point one, selection oath for Mayor Pro Tempore. Is that the right way to pronounce it?
Yeah, it's Pro Tempore.
Pro Tempore, okay, that sounded weird. Okay, thank you. Can we get a staff report?
Yes, Mayor Stevens and council. It is, it's the vice mayor position. And so the rule of the Hollister municipal code is that the, a vice mayor is selected on an annual basis. Typically, they take their seat at the second meeting in, sorry, in December. And so in the ordinance, it states that it'll go numerically one, two, three, four. We've done it both ways. Recent history is it's been going backwards. So with that, it's currently council member Puchet from District One. If you continue to go backwards, it would next be council member Deanda from District Four. So it's up to the council how you'd like to proceed.
Okay, any questions or comments for our city clerk? Okay, not seen any. Do we have any public comments on this item?
There are no public comments for this item.
Okay. So thank you, thank you for that. Any, any other last minute questions, any comments?
I would just like to say it's been an honor to serve in your stead, Mayor. It's only a couple of meetings that I actually ran. It wasn't that terrifying. But I think I got some good congratulations, and people said I did a pretty good job. And I'd do it all over again. But it definitely is time to pass the torch in the light of the Olympics that's coming. It's gonna be in Italy this year, is that right? Something like that. Think it's gonna be in Italy, Winter Olympics. But anyway, it's been an honor. Thanks for the opportunity.
Yeah. Well, thank you, thank you for stepping in as needed. And, and you did a lot more than just step in during meetings. You participated in meetings outside of the city council and attended events with me, so I appreciate that. Okay, so can I get then a motion on this item? And, yeah, so can I just get a motion on this item?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor to put our council member Priscilla Deanda from District Four into the vice mayor position, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, no opposition. Congratulations, Ms. Vice Mayor. I look forward to the next year serving side by side. Congratulations. So we're gonna move on now to committee assignments. So I'm gonna check in with the council. Any reports from any of the council members on any committee meetings, ad hoc meetings, et cetera? Go ahead, go ahead, council member.
Thank you. So I attended COG. Council member Puchet, he's currently the vice mayor still, Vice Mayor Puchet, was actually there as well. And we had a large group of students come from Gavlin College. I'm very proud of them for coming to speak up on transportation issues. We're pretty vocal about essentially, how did this project ever get through without them, like ensuring that there was transportation provided, AKA public transportation provided out there. So we just encourage them to keep communicating with us, and that we are intended on working with them. But at the same time, working with Gavlin College trustees to figure out how we're gonna pay, not only pay for this, but sustain public transportation out there. Another thing we just wanted to promote is that there is Dial-A-Ride. I know that there's some challenges with Dial-A-Ride out there, but there is Dial-A-Ride available. And then the staff at Gavlin College let us know that there are Uber vouchers available for some students as well. But it's a huge issue. It's an equity issue. I'm very proud of the kids for coming out. They're kids to me, but they're, they're adults. And all of the staff are helping organize that. Look forward to continuing the conversations. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, council member Resendez. Council member Deanda, nothing to report? On this side of the room, no reports? Oh, go ahead. Go ahead, council member Morales.
So just, I'll have a report next time, but Integrate Waste Management will have a meeting Monday. And three CE will have a meeting on Wednesday. Looking forward to reporting back. And then I did have a question for one of the committees that might be COG or might be one of the other committees. So if there's any plans on expanding the rail in Hollister, or at least improving it, and I'm not sure which committee is working on that, or have any of us sit on any committee that addresses that, might be COG, but might be Andy.
Yeah, the rail, yeah. That's, that is something that we discuss in, in COG. So yeah, we can keep, yeah.
Can you just let me know the, the response, so I can get back to my.
Yeah, I mean, and I'll just tell you just briefly, and by the way, council member Morales, Bino Abraham is the executive director of COG, and so we can reach out to her as well anytime you'd like. But there has been some conversation about the possibility of that in the long future. But right now, there are so many other pressing matters that, that seem to be more priority, and also things that are at this time more within reach. So for example, some of the things related to like public transportation, obviously, twenty-five is always a big point of discussion, as well as some other things that are happening in the county and San Juan Batista. However, that is always sort of in like, almost like a parking lot, it's always in the, in the back of our mind. But I think it's, it would be good to reach out to Bino.
I have a quick one.
Okay, wait, let me check in with, anything else? Okay, okay, thank you, council member Morales. Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Just to kind of help you answer the question, San Bernardino COG did have a meeting. It was at Payne's at, I think it was like five to seven thirty on the eighteenth, I believe. And a reactivating the rail line was one of the options on their website. You can check out the available options. Many people from the community attended the event. It was very well attended. And so check that out. There's still an opportunity to ask questions. If you have questions about the various ways that we're gonna move forward on California twenty-five, there are various ways. I mean, like eight different ways that we're like identifying and reactivating the rail line is one of them. So check that out. Oh, and one thing I forgot to mention, if I can have a floor for a second, we all attended the lights-on ceremony, which was fantastic. Ulster Fire let us have a fire truck and, you know, firemen to cart a couple of us around. That was a big time dig deep moment. Thank you so much for helping out with the effort. Council member Morales and I got to hop in a sixties twenty-one window bus, which is more than I make in probably a good couple of years. These things are worth bank, man, who knew? But it was a very cool thing. The community came out and just what a great event. And just glad to be a part of it.
Yeah, great. Thank you for that. I have something, just really quick. I don't really have anything to report, but I did, I did, on any committees, there hasn't, hasn't been anything in the last couple of weeks that I've attended. However, I did wanna let the public know that the city manager and I have, about a month and a half ago, we convened our regularly scheduled meetings with our Amazon partners. They wanna be, continue to be good community partners for us. And although I don't have anything specific to report right now, I just want the, the public to know that we are in discussions with them about. about continuing our community partnership. And then I also wanted to just elaborate on the Lights On Parade, as well as a tree lighting ceremony. What an incredible event that was. We had such a great time. I just wanna thank everybody who came out. It was, it was so well-attended. I heard from a few people that they hadn't seen crowds like that at the Lights On Parade in a very long time. So it was really, really nice to see the public coming out, supporting our business as well as just coming together. It's so great to see our friends and neighbors, community coming together and just having a great time to kick off the holiday season. And certainly, the tree lighting ceremony was really, really fun. And I wanna ditto that thank you to our Hollister Fire Department. Johnny was the one who drove us around. What, it was really fun to hang out with him. And, and he was, he drove very safely, can I just say? Got us around very, very safely. But it was really, really, he was really sweet. And, and just tons of thank you to him for, for driving us around and letting us yell out the, the fire truck Merry Christmas to everyone. It was really fun. So thank you for that. And then also, thank you to our Parks and Rec Department and our Public Works for getting everything ready for us, so that we can do that. It does not happen in a blink of an eye. It takes a lot of work to make that happen. So thank you to all of the Hollister staff from those departments that made that happen. And that's all I have. I'm gonna turn it over to our city manager to see if he has anything else to report.
Just a couple of things. City Clerk Woodworth, when will we have future Vice Mayor Deanda, raise your right hand, just for clarification?
We can either do it tonight, or anytime between now and the next meeting, or at the next meeting on the fifteenth. It's entirely up to you.
So something to think about, council member, in time.
Let's do it tonight. Yay, yeah.
Okay, maybe we'll end with that. And I would like to echo what you had. I spent over two hours wandering the downtown area and echo every, all your sentiment on that. It was a wonderful event. And I too thank our fire department. I thank our police department. I thank our public works department. I thank our Parks and Recreation folks. I thank our Downtown Hollister Association and the, I mean, there wasn't an intersection that wasn't covered by a volunteer. It, it was truly a wonderful event, and lots of people. So thank you to everybody. It was good to see the community coming together. There are times to come together. That was excellent. And so that and the swearing in, those are the only two item clarifications I had. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, great. Thank you for that. And let's go, let's do the swearing in then.
There is an item on there for an agenda, a city council.
Oh, sorry, I did miss that one. Okay, so we have requests for future agenda items from council member Resendez, revisions to planning commission bylaws. Any, anything you'd like to say on that one?
I just think it's time for us to go back and take a look at the process that's happening at Planning Commission. So I would like to look at the bylaws. I'd like to look at who's there, who's not there. The Planning Commission is one of the most important commissions. They're all important, but this one has long-term effects. And I really want us to go back and revisit some of the bylaws that are happening. And some of, just the process of how things are happening at the Planning Commission. So if we could do that, I'd appreciate it.
Okay, so can I get thumbs, I think we just need thumbs up on this one, if you guys are okay with that. Good time to review those. All right, thank you. So we will have that on a future agenda. And then, and then we, let's do the swearing in now.
Do you want to do it before or after we adjourn? Just to check.
Um, Mayor?
Can we do it before we adjourn? Yeah, I would like to do it. Is that okay?
I just had a quick question.
Go ahead.
Projects follow-up. I had an item a while ago that should have come back at several meetings in regards to empty building policy that was almost done. So if we can get a follow-up on that, when it's gonna come back to city council for, for review?
We'll do. There has been some work on that. We'll get back.
Okay.
Okay, thank you for that. Okay.
So raise your right hand, repeat after me. I, Priscilla Deanda.
I, Priscilla Deanda.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of invasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duty.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Okay, thank you. Okay, well, congratulations, Vice Mayor Deanda, beginning next meeting. And thank you again to soon-to-be former Vice Mayor Puchet. And with that, we will adjourn.